We'll call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For those who might be watching this meeting visually, I'm going to take my mask off in the same manner that the President and the Governor model. However, please note for the record, I am at least 20 feet away from the nearest other individual. So that way I can be heard, which I haven't been able to be heard the last several meetings. Remind you, this is a public meeting and that it is being recorded. At this point in time, we're going to do, at the rear of the room, we're going to do awards and recognition, and I would like to call on Commissioner Schaefer to do that.
Can they hear me if I talk from back here?
You, no.
I can.
I think you're going to have to come up from the microphone.
That microphone, okay.
Okay.
I believe you can hear him.
Oh, thank you, Jennifer.
Oh.
Then there you go.
Okay, you want me to back there? Do you want me to, before you go?
Go.
You're up there.
Okay, I'll still do it with the dais or the podium. The Younta County Employee Excellence Committee was created to acknowledge and commend the efforts of employees who serve the citizens of the county efficiently and effectively with a focus on professional development and outstanding customer service. In that spirit, the committee was just to share with you the nomination letters from your peers that warranted this recognition. Rex goes above and beyond for his clients. Sorry about that. Sorry for the deception. Rex goes above and beyond for his clients as well as his coworkers. He always puts his clients' needs first and is always willing to be flexible to provide the best supports, to be the best supports for them. He has been an adult foster care provider for 20 years, along with working with youth at Pendleton Academy, Lifeways, and with the DD community, and Bethgee, and Horizon Project Incorporated. I feel so blessed to be able to work with someone that cares so much for this community. Rex is a great advocate for the DD community. While at the DD program, Rex has become the go-to person to help personnel, personal support workers maneuver through the express reporting system so that they are able to start serving or continue to serve the DD community. He always comes to work in the morning with a smile on his face and a hello for everyone he sees. If you are having a bad day, there is no way that you will stay that way. He is always there to help with whatever is asked of him. I have worked with Rex often over several years. He is just an all-around great guy who is positive and an amazing part of the developmental disabilities team. He truly is an asset to CDDP, the clients he worked with, and the county as a whole. Congratulations, Rex Holden.
Thank you.
So, along with the, with the award certificate, you also get eight hours of paid time off. And I think some other stuff as well.
And some other goodies.
Thank you.
And then we'll get a, we'll get a quick picture.
Quick photo.
Okay, so it's okay to go up there?
Yes, that would John just find out.
We're masked up, so. And we're only going to be there more than 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Perfect.
I don't know if you can do that too. Don't forget that little one's a piece of bit small, so.
Yeah, that's important.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Again, sorry for the deception, but it was worth it. I'm going back to my office.
Okay, congratulations. We have a second.
Thank you.
Second item of recognition and celebration, and I would call on Commissioner Doran for that.
Mr. Chair, I think you're in a bit.
In regards to our fellow communications, this has been a blind appearance here and good to see. Over the last several months, the Communications Division of the Sheriff's Office has experienced a severe staff shortage, resulting in many hours of mandated overtime and mounting stress on remaining personnel. The county recognizes the immense sacrifices each member of the team has made during these unprecedented times. When putting together this letter, two quotes from Vincent Marty resounded in our minds. Individual commitments to a group effort, that is what makes a team work, a company work, a society work, and a civilization work. Also, the measure of who we are is what we do with what we have. The tremendous efforts of each individual within the Communications Division is appreciated and valued, not only by your commissioners, but also by the community you serve. Each of you deserves a huge thank you and acknowledge that for your dedication to provide professional service to the public. The determination of each and every one of you to preserve, persevere during this difficult time is a testament to your commitment to your fellow teammates and your community. And personally, thank you to Karen, her whole team, and everybody that pitched in, including Commissioner Schaefer. It is a big, big, huge thank you from all of us. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Congratulations on behalf of all the commissioners, and thank you, Commissioner Doran, for sharing that proclamation. Is there any input from, any additions to the agenda? Pray tell not. We have quite a long agenda. Any public input from anyone who is not talking about one of the specific items? Okay, then I will, I will make an adjustment in the agenda and call upon Kim Weisenthal for item two, creation of positions at CDDP.
Good morning. Kim Weisenthal, Younta County Developmental Disabilities Program, Program Manager. I'm here to respectfully request that we be allowed to add two positions, specifically service coordinators, to our current staff. As listed on the pinky, we have seen a tremendous amount of growth in our caseloads, and that does not appear to be slowing down, which is a great thing for Younta County and those individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities and their supports. We have the money currently in carryover, and that money will be able to sustain those positions for at least the next two years, in which we plan on incorporating them into our onboard budget.
I assume you have talked to our CFO, Robert Paul, but as a matter of record, I would like to make note of that.
Yes, I got approval from the Director of Finance, as well as the Director of Human Services. I meant human, yes, sorry, resources. Human Resources, excuse me, I knew. As well as my liaison commissioner.
Perfect. Good, we'll have that in the record. All right. Do I have any questions or a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the two new positions for CDDP.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you both for coming. All right, back to item one, which is dispatch UPS purchase. Are they coming on? Okay.
Good morning, commissioners. So what we have is a proposal.
Could you, could you please, sorry to interrupt you. Could you please identify yourself and your address?
Sorry, this is Captain Premer with the Sheriff's Office. What we have before you is a request for a UPS, which is an unaurated power supply, for a new one to be put in. The old one was installed with the building back in 99. It's been refurbished at least once, and the batteries have been replaced, we believe, three times. We will, there is a title on it. We are going to be giving back to the state a portion of 37.5% of the cost. We have, we would like to go ahead and go with CPSI, as they've been our mentor since the installation of the generator. And then we will also be having Pendleton Electric doing the electrical piece.
Okay, other questions?
I just want to, with one, earlier we approved a supplemental UPS. Is this part of the same program I, when I say earlier, I mean earlier in the year?
That is not, what you put earlier was for, it's called CDE. That is the hardware pieces, or I'm sorry, the maintenance pieces for our phone system. That is also getting replaced. You will be coming forward with the software piece of it, because they don't do them together. This is something entirely different. This is the unaurated power supply that runs all of the critical equipment for our phones, our N1 system, the dispatch cab. And I think that's it. We do have a couple of other, like radio data requests, like on these owners, stuff, but they are going to be taken out. So this needs to be replaced. Like, as I said, it's long overdue. Their surprise is still working.
Thank you. I would move for approval to purchase for dispatch UPS from CPSI in the amount of
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain Premer. We will go on to item three, aware grants. Commissioner Schaefer, are you presenting those?
I think, is Bob Walder on? I think he was going to say.
Yes, I'm on, I'm on the line.
Oh, okay, sorry, Bob.
This is Bob Walder, County Planning Director. I'm also a member of the Aware Committee. So I'm here today to share with you the committee's selections for the 2021 Apena Weston Education Resource Enhancement Community Benefit Plan Grants. Our group met on March 22nd, and we started out the meeting approving a request for a grant that we awarded last year. We approved an extension of that. That's for City of Apena Weston Apena High School, which is awarded a grant of $22,727.71 for softball fields and bathrooms. That project was nearly complete, but they still needed some additional time, so we recommended approval of that request. And then we had our 2021 grants. We received 10 applications, and we're choosing to fund 10, or nine of those through the Aware Program, and so I'll go through those later. The first is for Apena Main Street Association for renovation materials for the Pendleton, the old Pendleton Drifters building that they purchased, in the amount of $2,975. East Younta County Fire Rescue, a brush truck for $15,000. Apena Elementary School Farm to School, outdoor learning structure for $10,000. Apena Public Library, library seating for $2,011. Apena's Jan Theater Project, miscellaneous construction expenses, $9,843. City of Weston Electronic Reader Board for $15,078. East Younta County Ambulance, a drop-jawed extraction tool for $12,267. Weston Middle School Gym, wheelchair replacement, $49,599. And Weston Apena High School Football Field Build Gold Post, $13,227. So this approval will be good for a year. Assuming you guys approve those today, I will notify the school superintendent, and she'll provide award letters to the grant
Thank you, Bob.
Chair, I have approval for the grants of, BCC Order 2021-027.
That's second motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you.
Yes, we have the next two, the agenda items.
Yes, you do.
First is for filling out a finding commission vacancy. We have a position, Molly hasn't made, as a desire in our finding commission, to take on a position of a civil court judge, or municipal court judge. And so we were looking for replacement, and we recommend even Sam Tucker, in the Weston area, be approved, considered on the finding commission, to fill out the remainder of Molly's term, and then he would then be able to hold for two full terms beyond that.
I would, I would move for adoption of Order BCC 2021-027.
Hold on a minute.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bob.
The third item approved from my department is for bringing in-house the, we currently have a contract for the STIF and STF coordination of those programs, and recommendation is to house those within the planning department. And those responsibilities will follow under our department, our current finer, due to JI exhibition, maybe during the week, move up into a senior finance position for management of the current program. And then the request will be to backfill that position or create a new finer, due to JI exhibition, to fill in and reflect those that she was, that she had been doing. So it would really help us maximize the budget for our department and make a use of those STIF funds we're receiving for city coordinator, and also maximize the services that our department can provide.
Mr. Chair, I have the approval.
Second motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Bob. Human Services, Mark?
Good morning, gentlemen. Our board, Human Services Department is going to have, and would be a very suitable legal, be all over for our department as program manager. I believe we have two different items today. One is for a hire of a pure mentor, and I thought we figured it would be, I think it's very basic, it says approval for hire. And the second one is a temporary hire for an EDP that we have. And we, we have been modeling from other departments to utilize any internal resources, so it's unlikely we'll be even, but it could be. So we'd like to keep that approval.
Well, I think we're going to need two separate motions on those. So the first one, Mr. Chair, I have approval for the argument of pure mentor.
I have a second, I have a quick question. What's the financial impact on that?
They did grant funding, they did, and I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, I believe it's funded through December of this year.
It is funded through December of this year, provided local services may be able to carry that position over after that grant exists.
So are we hiring this as a temporary or a goldmine or?
It's currently slot as full-time position within the department. So this is a, somebody had left a requirement here, it's over, it's gone.
Back on the division.
Right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. You have a second motion there, Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd also move approval of a temporary person that may or may not be given, as we're happy to grant the right one.
The motions are second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. You have a second item too, I believe, Mark?
That's it.
See, I have to make, hard to do that.
He did that all with one.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you. The asphalt oil contract, could you do that, Commissioner Doran? Because I think Mr. Fellows indicated he had somewhere else he needed to be this morning.
Good morning, openers. I was able to make it.
Oh, okay.
He doesn't start for a little, this is Tom Fellows, you can look at it, only words directors. Before me today is our request for contract for our emulsified asphalt that we use for our chip seal projects. We went out and requested bids this year. We had three responses. Albin asphalt for $384 a ton delivered. Virgon asphalt emulsion for $424 a ton delivered. And Idaho asphalt supply for $447 a ton delivered. Our recommendation this year is that we go with Albin asphalt for the delivered price of $384 a ton, and that should get us through our chip seal season this year.
I would move for approval, but.
I'll say.
Real quick comment, that if I remember right, Tom, last year's was $309 a ton, so this is a substantial increase that could have been a lot worse.
Correct. Emulsion, all our, all asphalt prices have gone tremendously in the last year, not, not just due to COVID, but there are a number of circumstances out there. And Albin asphalt has previously not been a huge competitor in Younta County, but they certainly, so here's that they really went after our work this year, so.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. The next item. Thank you, Tom. Joe, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yep.
Joe, from our Public Health Director, we're going to go ahead and tell you. With the, first one I got for you is a request to reclassify our Disease Prevention Specialist position into a Community Disease Manager position, and we would go and post to backfill the Disease Prevention Specialist. This, we funded out, some of the Community Disease and COVID funding money we're getting from the state, which for the first time, we have some longer-term ability, because it's money done more than just a few months at a time. And this would result in a permanent FTE increase to support our Community Disease Program for the immediate and for moving forwards, allowing us to branch out as COVID drops off and pick up some of our other activities that are still concerns, but have not had as much attention as it lays that we've, we still need to handle to require.
Joe, is this the individual who came to us fortuitously from CDC?
Yeah, so we picked up this individual, she started with us in January, came to us from CDC with a very good background in Community Disease, and came to help bolster our program and provide some health education outreach to the community. Obviously, things turned out a little differently, but we have been very glad that she was here.
Yeah, that was actually January of 2020, was it not?
Uh, uh, correct, yes, like right before COVID hit.
Very, very fortuitous. Okay. Do you have a motion?
So, second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Joe, I believe you have a second item.
Yeah, the second one is part of our action grants that we have access to, through our school-based health center. This is a grant that focuses on providing education around healthy relationships for teenagers. Because of the pandemic, obviously, schools weren't operating the way they usually were. Our staff weren't able to perform the activities that were originally planned as part of this grant. And so working with the grant administrators, we come up with a alternate plan for the use of these funds to have some vehicles created to help promote education around healthy relationships. And the quoted amounts to have this done is, is, you know, $9,000, which will all come from that grant, and has to be approved by the grant administrator as a, as an agreed upon expense.
So moved.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Doug, are you the next one?
I believe so. Coming before the board for consideration is an ambulance service waiver. This is a continuation of previous requests by the East Younta County Ambulance, so it's very helpful this year. And it gets to allow them, for awareness, to allow staffing of their ambulances with non-EMT drivers. They can request us at the state recording, provided that they get the local support of the board of commissioners, as well as their district physician advisor. And as has been in the past, since 2013, the board commissioner has approved this waiver, and it's before the board again to do it for the upcoming 2021 recertification for the district.
Mr. Chair, seeing that I was part of the board of directors for the East Younta County Ambulance District at that time, the first act of this was a negative, I would move to approve this request.
Second, does anybody know if we have the same arrangement anywhere else in the county?
I guess we have, that other districts requested.
Sorry, sir, I can't hear you. Can you say it again?
Yes, we have other districts requesting.
Other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Doug, I believe you have the next item as well.
Yes, the, coming before the board is a request from a former property owner to repurchase a property that was foreclosed on for the length of property taxes. This is allowed under state law, within the discretion of the board of commissioners to allow. And so the amount that they would repurchase it would be the amount of taxes that were home at the time that the county acquired the property, which in this case is $12,500, and it's before the board to authorize the resale of the property to the right owner.
Do you have a motion?
I would move to adopt Order TX 2021-03. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next item is authorization for representation, I believe.
Yes, I don't know if Commissioner Doran wants to do that. I can. Younta County is a voting member of the Younta Cooperative. Their annual meeting is upcoming, and this request is to allow Commissioner Doran to appear on behalf of the county and to participate in the vote on behalf of the county.
I'll move for adoption. Approval?
I think that motion's approved.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. Item number, number 14, National County Government Month.
This is also the annual proclamation that is requested by NACO, and it's before the board again for consideration to declare April 20th, April 2021, National County Government
I would move to adopt Order Number BCC 2021-025.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think we'll amend that by suggesting that Commissioner Schaefer go across the street for doughnuts each day that week. All right, item number.
I have a second.
All right, item 15, Help Grants.
I can handle that. I attended the Help meeting, Board meeting this year. The one thing before we did to the funding, it, District and Hope Derek Coop is taking the new position with ESD, and will be leaving the Help Board. As soon as they name this replacement, we'll be bringing that person's name forward to replace Derek as the, on that board. And when that happens, I'll bring that back to this board. This year's request, the City of Helix is an un-requested This year's request, the city of Helix is a fund request for $21,250. It's for chip sealing basically all of One Street in Helix. But that is going to depend on how far the chip seal program goes because they partner with Uncoiled County, with Tom Fellows. And obviously, with the increase in the cost of oil, that may modify how far $21,250 goes in the near future. The school fund request is also $21,250. One $9,000 to the Elmore Baker Memorial Garden, Rose Garden. If you've ever visited Helix High School, there is a garden out in front, a brick fairly substantial size. It's been there as far as long as I can remember, but they haven't been able to afford to operate it and take care of it the way it should be. And so they're going, they're, would like to finish that project that started many decades ago and build it in the name of Elmore Baker. $5,300 for technology, they're upgrading their media boards, interactive panels. $4,700 for underground irrigation, which will complete Helix High School grounds and have it all underground, including the full baseball field instead of just half of the baseball field. It would make a huge difference for the school. And then $2250 upfront entrance lights to the building. It was kind of funny, the 1947 picture that they used, or excuse me, 1944 picture that they used to demonstrate what the original lights looked like. My dad was actually in that picture. So that was kind of fun and nobody, it wasn't done on purpose. So anyway, the total request is $21,250. I make a motion to approve the HEOP request.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next item is for an appointment to the Echo Community. Is that correct? What? Yes or no?
Yes, sorry.
Oh, okay. Appointment to the Echo Community Benefit Plan Board. The recommendation is Tracy Broyles, and I would move that we approve her appointment, BCC 2021-030. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Seventeen, Fund Account.
Coming before the board is to create a new fund within the county budget. This is a fund that has historically existed. It's a jail commissary account, which has been outside the county budget. It's now being brought in, and as a result, needs to have the account established. It will serve as the inmate welfare fund account that's required of the state statute to help lay a county that has a jail. And expenditures are limited to it only for inmate welfare. And so it's before the board is to create that account for budgetary purposes.
I would move for approval, order number PCC 2021-029.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, item number 18, Courthouse Planning and Needs Assessment Committee.
I can address that. First of all, this is a committee that's going to put together, and I'd like to thank, first of all, thank Matt for all his background work and all the help, direction and put this together. The members are identified, and I would also like to thank each of the members, the technical members that have agreed to take on this very, very long task. I'm not sure if I'm even will be paying on the committee at the end of 10 years or whatever conclusion this is, but I do appreciate them stepping forward and being able to participate during the beginning. The members and proposed members are Roy Blain, Daniel Dorn, Honorable Daniel Hill, Tim Mayberry, Molly Austin-Mann, and John Mayer, John Turner. And I would move for approval.
I have questions on this, so I'm probably not going to give this a second. I just, I think we're too far out in my opinion on this. I think, I was just feeling with the change we've seen over just the last 12 months, I can only imagine what the change will be in the next 12 years. I think maybe 10 years from now would be a good time to do this, but I don't think now is the time.
Yeah, I would definitely most strenuously disagree. We have a 10-year start on this project, but where we were 10 years ago, as far as technology goes, as far as the relationship with community, the courthouse has, I don't think that there's any time to delay this. This is a 10-year start.
Well, I will second, I will second the motion and make note of the fact that I don't know that it's a conflict, but because it will not, it'll be irrelevant when we get closer, but I currently serve as Chair of the Chief Justice's Task Force for the State of Oregon on courthouse facilities and major renovations. And Commissioner Dorn is correct, well, both commissioners are correct in terms of it's well out there right now. I believe the priority list is 12 to 15 years out, so it's something that gets discussed well in advance of when anything happens. So I think continuing to monitor the issue is certainly important. On the other hand, I wouldn't want there to be a misinterpretation that the actual final recommendation or steps to go anywhere are going to be imminent. So I have seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Mark B is a name and that one doesn't proceed.
Oh, I'm sorry. We so rarely have one, I don't call them. Wildlife Services Budget.
This is coming before the board for basically notification purposes and possible discussions. We received a letter again from the USDA indicating what the 2021, 22 budget is going to be for Wildlife Services. And that's historically been the practice, it's going to be increased again. And the proposed county share is $79,500, which is in line with what was anticipated by the CFO when creating the budget. But it is, I guess, in looking at historical, this program, the county participation has been increasingly, almost a disproportionate of the other departments in this program, whether it's the federal government as well as the state. I believe the federal support has been remained relatively constant, but the state support has been decreasing over the years. Currently, the county picks up approximately 71% of its cost. It started at around half of it, and now we are up to almost three quarters of it. But what's before the board is basically to approve the county to continue participating in this program.
I would, I would actually personally move that we approve this, but also that we send a letter of concern to the state requesting an explanation of why they are failing to live up to their share of the obligation, historic obligation, and why more and more is being passed on to the county.
I'll second Chair Murdock's motion. I have a meeting with these folks next, I believe, on the 12th. And I have, I have some other concerns on how this program is getting funded, not just, not just by, not just the flat numbers and dollars, but also to some of even the line item issues. I think it's a critical program, but I think how it's getting funded, it seems to be just basically carte blanche, and I had issues with that portion of it, too.
I think you added to that, since you're going to meet with them. I would be curious to find out what level of oversight and guidance we have since we're providing 71% of the funding.
That is actually number one on a list of about eight questions that I have for that meeting.
Good. All right.
Good, good. I'm sorry, Chair Murdock. I definitely would like to be able to have a letter from all, from the commission that I can take with me to that meeting to put an explanation point on this board's concerns.
Okay. Other discussion questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Item number 20, Federal Funding Consultant. No, I'll speak to that. And I think Commissioner Dorn also will probably speak to it. We became aware of the fact that the city of Hermiston has been using a national firm, Merchant McIntyre and Associates, been using them for some time, in part to go through the, particularly in our interest at least, is available federal funding that's arisen as part of the stimulus funds. These are extremely long and very, very complex documents that require really an expert to go through them, to find out what's available. But in addition, there also are any number of federal grant programs that are available but require really experienced personnel well beyond our pay grade and located probably in Washington DC because our interest is federal. We did explore, Commissioner Dorn first became aware of the program, pointed out that the city of Hermiston has been using it. I spoke with Byron Smith, the city manager in Hermiston. He had only the highest praise for the work of this group and indicated that probably the big concern we would have going down this road to be returned on investment. And he assured me that that wasn't an issue. So Commissioner Dorn, since you uncovered this, and I probably said everything had been said.
I think you covered a lot of, and most of, Chair Murdock. Well, a couple of things I would like to add, especially in a public forum like this, is this is a group that once we are on board and slaying forward with a cover more than just a county. Now, large cities in Uncoiled County have a critical mass to attend to these kinds of requests from the federal government, but we have smaller cities that just do not have the opportunity to participate or to do the cleaning of the documents or even the preparation of the grants, along with special districts throughout the county. I think that this program, as we get it up and running, which I envision happening very quickly, is going to put us in a position to be a great asset to the rest of the county, not just in county umbrella issues or opportunities, but for individual communities that we will be able to bring for them, forward to them to ask for participation or see if they solely want to participate and still take advantage of the skills, of the skill sets of Merchant McIntyre. So I'm excited about this. I've talked to other communities that are looking for a route to be sensible in draft grant programs, not just our individual departments of Uncoiled County, but for the county as a whole. And I think this is a holistic view and a very huge step forward to help the rest of the county, at the same time helping ourselves. So I definitely endorse this move.
I think one of the things that we try to do because of the nature of our county, where we have several large cities, four I think, and then we have some very small communities that really have very limited staff and very limited capacity, and without the work, help of the county, they're kind of lost. I understood you were going to go to the Ukiah Board City Council Meeting sometime this week. Did you hear anything from them about this kind of thing?
I did. And just like, I've been trying to attend all of the city's, city council meetings. Last night, I was able to attend the UCA City Council Meeting for the second time this year. I mentioned that this was on our agenda tonight and what it entails and kind of what some of the goals of this program are going to be. It would just, the smiles on those guys' faces, those people's faces was just like, wow, that's something we could never dream of on our own. And I think that that's the position that we can look at moving forward with this, with this group.
I think, I remember, I think Commissioner Schaefer, were you on board yet? When we, the three commissioners, met with officials from the city of Ukiah, and it certainly was an awakening about just how much help the small communities need that they don't have available to themselves.
If I may, Chair, I don't think that's within the scope of this contract. It's mostly primarily for the county. And I don't think there's any discussion in there about utilizing it for other jurisdictions and assistance.
I hope, I hope that we get a chance for you to do that, Doug, because that's a huge part. So maybe, maybe we should delay this till we clarify that, Chair.
All right, yeah. This is mostly county oriented.
Well, we have two options. We could either, we could either approve it and get the county's foot in the door and then explore with them what it would take to sweep in small communities. Could we do that?
Aye. We have a mall for it.
Okay. Do you have a motion of that effect?
I would move. Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, counsel.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the final item on our agenda this morning, item number 21, is a business grant program.
Commissioner Schaefer? Yeah, I can see that one. So the city of Ontario is seeking to apply for a community development block grant to assist small businesses that have lost business revenue as a result of complying with social distancing guidelines. They grant one funding for eligible businesses in Uncoiled County, and it'd be administered by one of our community marketers, Steve Alchery, to include Uncoiled County in the African, both IPA would be of Ontario and would be what we would need to consider today. And this would help the business of high and less in numbers who have not received any other funding through like PCD or ID or anything like that. So this is specifically the targets of small, the, and they're called the long pop shops that have not received any other assistance, even safer federal assistance at this time. And with that, I would actually make the motion to enter into the naming of the city of Ontario for the, for the service.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will now move into individual commissioner comments. Commissioner Dorn?
First of all, I think it's, even though I know the disagreement with Commissioner Schaefer, I think that the courthouse planning and needs, having the vision to move forward with that, as Mike ran it out, always said, we're not planting the tree for our shape, we're planting the tree to make sure that our grant kids have shape. I think that's an important, important way to look at this project because it isn't going to happen overnight. And it's kind of an A team of steering committees, so I have a lot of faith and, a lot of faith and a lot of respect for those guys and those people that have volunteered and are looking forward to move down the road.
No, and I agree. I think the committee is a good idea. I just, and my personal opinion is I just don't think it's today. I think we're putting the cart in front of the horse. And I agree with you that the committee assembled this top of the folks, couldn't agree more with that. So, but my concerns are, you know, we're 12 to 15 years from even being considered to be on the list. So I think it's just, you know, a long way to get there.
Commissioner Schaefer, do you have other comments?
You know, we just, I wanted to make everybody aware that we did go up for RSP, your question proposal for a new community mental health provider for one, put under one roof for mental health and alcohol regulation. So the, I think that opens on the 26th is what the proposal would do. So that's going to be exciting. I think it would be a big day for Umtiti County for mental health conditions.
Right. And I think a companion comment would be the fact that we're the only county in the nation involved in the Rocket Program. We're a pilot participant. We have spent this week, Mrs. Slatt and myself, trying to find additional participants because we're expanding the committee. We had 15 to start with, and I'm not sure how many more we've added this week.
I don't know.
How many?
Five more invitations went out, but I don't know.
Okay, I think we had nine, and we have five, five more invitations that have gone out. But we're getting a wide array of participants and representing a lot of different walks. And so, we really appreciate people's participation. Two other comments. One, the vaccination eligibility has been moved up two weeks to April 19th, both nationally and locally, in Oregon. So I would like to have us put on our agenda for Monday's staff meeting, a revisiting both how we conduct our board meetings and access to the courthouse, and when we want to begin looking in that direction. The other thing I would put on that agenda is a discussion of the federal contract that we approved today and how we want to go forward, where we want to go with that. So I would accept from any other items, but that's where we are. Okay.
I think I agree. I've heard from McIntyre, I think that that's an incredible step forward for Umtiti County. And I don't see any big hurdles, hopefully, hopefully Chase says he does, but I don't see any huge hurdles in making sure that we can identify the other jurisdictions, because I think that's an important calling in the whole, yeah.
Any other comments for the good of the order? We're adjourned.